Call on Councilman Roberts to lead us in the invocation, followed by pledging allegiance.
For yesterday and today, the city council meetings. What we should watch over us while we look for this to our city. Well, bless each and every one who came out today. Well, bless them and bless them and bless them. Create them a clean heart, there's no malice. Lord, now that we finish our business, we have to do what's over each and every one of us. As we go back to our very estate places. These are the lessons we have to hear in Jesus' name. We all pray and say together, amen.
Amen. Let's lead us to the light of the United States of America. A sovereign government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now let's come to order. Will the court please call roll for the establishment of a quorum?
Councilman McGee?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Present.
Councilman Rafferty?
Present.
Mayor?
A quorum is present. Is there a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one meeting?
I have a motion to amend the minutes of the July twenty twenty-one meeting. It states in the first couple of sentences that Jay Jenkins' mayor pledged allegiance and said a prayer and not the mayor. So if we would just amend those to say Jay Jenkins' councilman, then I would make a motion to amend them as such.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion to waive the reading of and approve the amended minutes of the July twentieth two thousand twenty-one meeting?
So moved.
So.
Will the court please call roll?
Councilman McGee?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Folks, are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Don't go without my friend.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Will the court please call roll?
Councilman McGee?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rafferty?
Yes.
The agenda has been adopted. Now we have something exciting going on in our community, the recognition of Fast Feet. I was introduced to this track program, I believe, two, well, it's been only been two weeks. The weekend of Juneteenth, I had the wonderful privilege of, well, I walked, they ran. Running alongside some of these amazing talented young kids at the David Satcher five K race. And that's really when I was introduced to how talented a lot of these kids really are. Coach Green, the founder of this, this was founded back in two thousand and six. And they've done a lot of amazing things since then. I'll let Coach Green come up and talk about that. But more importantly, I think this is an awesome opportunity for us to celebrate our young people and to encourage them and to really know what they're doing out in this community and surrounding areas. So if we could give them a round of applause as Coach Green comes up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting myself as well as my team of Fast Feet, being here on this glorious occasion. A little bit about Fast Feet, we were established in two thousand and six. We are a travel track team, AU slash USATL. What that means is that we travel outside of Alabama to compete against other runners along the United States. We actually compete against the best. Just recently, we went down to Florida for Nationals. They had two divisions, they had the primary division as well as the club division. If they would stand up and I'll call their name. For our primary division, those are our babies. We call them the Fast Feet babies. They're ages five through eight. And those babies, they show out. First, I would like to say Brayden, he, Brayden Bell, if you stand up, please. Brayden plays tenth in the four hundred and he also plays sixth in the eight hundred and he also received his All-American status.
Way to go, bud!
Aiden Ford, he's not here right now and that's because his brother is competing in Texas at the Junior Olympics. And he is a part of a relay team that he's running with down there as well as representing Fast Feet doing long jump as well. Aiden Ford plays sixth in long jump as well and he received his All-American status. Armon Campbell, he plays, this is his first year running track. We call him Fat Mac. Armon, he plays third in the two hundred, second in the four hundred, and he won the eight hundred for his age group. He's only five years old.
Way to go, bud!
And then we move on to our young ladies. Our next runner we have here, she's a part-time track runner with a full-time part. She's a dancer. She competes both nationally with dancing and track. And this year, she finally had a chance to compete on a national level. And Ashley Bothwell, if you stand up, please. Ashley placed fourth in the one hundred, third in the two hundred, and she won the four hundred meters. Our next athlete, she's six years old. This is her year and a half. I say that because last year, COVID shut us down. Trinity, you come up here, Trinity. If you look on the Anderson Star that came out a couple of weeks ago, Trinity ran the five K that Ms. Smith was talking about. Trinity set the Alabama state record for age of six. She ran the five K with three point two miles in twenty-four minutes.
Wow.
Is very strong and she was one of the smallest girls in her event. She placed second in shot put on eleven feet, five inches. And she also broke the national record in eight hundred by running three oh one. But my next person coming up broke that record. But I still want to give it up for Trinity because she is a very hard worker. Like I said, she has the Alabama state record for the six hundred, five K, and she also broke the national record for eight hundred meters. Our next runner is Isaiah Campbell. This is her third year of running. She has about a hundred more medals at home. Her first year of running for me, she actually placed seventh in the nation in the two hundred at the age of four. Now she's six and this year, she placed sixth in the two hundred, second in the four hundred, and seventh in long jump. Our last primary baby, this is a very special young lady. This is her first year of running. She just turned six last Thursday. Down in Florida, Gracie is a two-time national winner. What that means is that Gracie won the four hundred meters, she won the eight hundred meters, and set the national record. She beat Trinity's record. Ashley and Gracie at the same time. So both of them beat the national record. But the only one that's going to go in the books is Gracie, she ran the eight hundred meters in exactly three minutes flat. Also, Gracie won, she placed second in the two hundred. She was two tenths away from triple gold. But what's more special for Gracie is that at the same five K, Gracie set the state record for age group five and set the new world record for the age group five in one minute, twenty-two minutes and ten seconds. Now, I don't want to leave out my big kids. They ran in the club division and all of them placed in the top fifty in their race. And that's phenomenal because down in Florida, there was over three thousand athletes. And we were one of three teams that represented Alabama. We were the only team that represented Cowan County. We were the only team that represented the city of Anderson that went down there and showed out. So when I call your name, please stand up so we can get your recognition. Destiny Jordan. Andre Ford is not here, he's in Texas competing right now. Anthony Bothwell. And Tony Hicks, he's at football practice right now. Christian Gibson. Ronnie Matthews. He's not here right now. But I would like to also, can I have that trophy, please? Also, I would like to recognize to the city that this past year, we are, we run it in the circuit called Track Lab Circuit. That's thirteen weeks of track and field in Georgia. Once again, we are one of the few teams that go over there to compete in Georgia. Well, for each age group, they tally the points. At the end of the thirteen weeks, the team with the most points per age group, they win the championship. Well, our six under girls are this year's Track Lab champions. That consisted of Isaiah, Trinity, Trinity, Trinity. Gracie, and Evelyn, she's not here right now, she's at soccer practice. Our girls, they finished with a total of five hundred and ninety-five points, while second place had a total of a hundred and forty-five.
Wow.
And the thing about it is, we only have four girls. I did not have all four girls every weekend. Some weekends I had three, some weekends I had two. While other teams had at least ten girls that age group that competed every Saturday. And they couldn't, they could not handle my girls. Also, along with that, they also tally up individual points. Again, Gracie, she received the MVP for the Track Lab champion over there in Georgia. So thank you, kids.
Good job, guys.
I just wanted to speak on a few things that what we do in the community. Because I tell everybody this, we're not just a track team, we are a family. My kids go to different schools, they come from different backgrounds. Parents did not know each other, kids did not know each other until they came to Fast Feet. What we do is we try to service as much as we can to the community. It's like I tell my parents, as many fundraisers as we do, and I know I'm about to say it's gonna sound funny, we always go into your pockets asking, can we have five dollars here, can we have two dollars here, to be able to offset the cost of our retracting? We are non-profit track teams. Well, so what we do is we try to give back to the community as much as possible. Last year, we did a five K. We actually raised money for a little girl that's five years old that has cancer. I do a breast cancer five K every year. And every year, we select a group or we select a person we raise the money for and we donate part of the proceeds to them. And last year, this happened to be a young girl, four years old, that has a brain tumor. Okay? Also, we feed the homeless. This is our second year doing a backpack giveaway. We teamed up with Jermaine Sims at Barbara Shop and we gave out seventy book bags filled with school supplies in less than two hours. Also, what we did with part of the money that we raised throughout the year, we were able to give out two academic scholarships to two students. One of them is Ms. Burkett, she's going to UAV this fall. And another one is Mr. Farmy, he will be attending Birmingham Southern College. So we don't just run track, you know? We do multiple things and we also help out other old citizens that need our help or need their help or whatever. So what I would like to do is, if all the Fast Feet could just stand up. Everybody stand up. I want the city to look at these kids. Because to be a part of my team, you have to have at least a three point O GPA. Nobody on this team has a GPA less than three point O. Okay? And they spend an average of fifteen hours a week with me training. Not just on the track, but the older kids, they come to me in the gym as well. And not only do they have to keep their grades up and they have to perform on the track, but they know that to be a part of this team, you have to do some kind of community service. You have to be able to give back to the community. You can't be selfish, you can't be stingy. What the community do for you, they also turn around and do for you as well. So I would like to say thank you for inviting us. Thank you for learning a little more about Fast Feet. We are here to stay, we are not going nowhere. We want to continue to bring home medals, we want to continue to represent the city of Anderson. We want to continue to represent Cowan County and the state of Alabama. Thank you.
I want the council members to say something and then you all can come up and take a quick picture. But I do want to say, I am so amazed and so thankful for your leadership and for the family who is continuing on this program that is going to change the lives of these kids. Programs like this is what kept me focused and got me to the point to wear my mask, you know, at such a young age. So I'm super thankful and grateful for what you are doing, especially within this community. And you know, I got your back, whatever you need from me. Any other council members want to say anything?
I just, I want to applaud you all, each and every one of you, especially you, Coach Green. As a fellow coach, I know what it takes. And the values that you're putting in this young group of students and the parents that are helping you get them there are making the future leaders of Anderson. You absolutely are, you are doing what it takes. If everybody was doing what you were doing for these young kids, you guys will recognize one day how brave this man is and what he's done for you individually. You will see it in college, in your marriage, in your life, in your work, whatever you end up doing. Coach Green will always be a part of it and I am so impressed with you all. I live on my club, I watch you guys work, you are a family. I see you out there every, almost every afternoon working and it thrills me to see it. So I'm so proud of you all and all that you've accomplished and I know that your futures are really, really bright. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone, it's all about. Like I said, Anderson, we don't have a problem with our children, you know? Our children are doing what they need to do. So let's try to follow our children together.
Coach Green, I want to congratulate you for changing lives because it's exactly what you're doing. And I appreciate it so very much. And I want these competitive students to, I want to congratulate you and to say keep reaching for the stars.
And when you do, don't stop there. If you guys want to come up here and we'll take a quick picture with the team, you guys can kind of just be up here. And then we'll...
Hey, council member, we'll come out around the front and be an extra on the side, you know? We do that.
Yes, we're trying to shorten it.
Okay, everybody, one, two, three, one, two, three.
All right, congratulations!
I want to say one more thing before we leave. This is real personal. I want to thank Mr. Folks. Mr. Folks gave me my first coaching job. When my mom passed, I was getting in trouble. I was, I was lost. My spirit left my body. I couldn't do nothing but track trouble. Mr. Folks called me one day, said, Sam, come see me. This is when he was still working at Carver Center. My mom had only been gone about two or three months and I was already getting in that much trouble. Mr. Folks gave me my first coaching job, coaching the basketball team. The same group of boys won Anderson's first state championship in basketball. I had them boys, Mr. Folks had them boys. Together, we molded those boys. But overall, Mr. Folks may be the man who I am today. He showed me how to care for others without being selfish. He showed me how to look to others when you need help instead of trying to keep everything in. He showed me how to be a man. And every time I see him, I want to cry to give him a hug because he's changed my life so much. But before that, Mr. Folks was my basketball coach when I was twelve, thirteen years old, just like you. Once again, I was a troublemaker. I had a bad attitude. Great athlete, bad attitude. But Mr. Folks and my mom, they was my village. My mom gave Mr. Folks every permission. Act up, snatch him up. And he didn't have a problem doing it either. But he showed me how to be a competitive person, doing it the right way. Not stepping on toes, not being a stink in the back for just being honest. And so from that point on, I never forgot the things that he instilled in me, not as a coach, but as a man, period. So, Mr. Folks, again, I've been knowing you over thirty years. And I want to say I love you, I want to say thank you.
I've never seen Mr. Folks shed a tear, so I'm trying to get myself together too. But that moment right there just really goes to show what you can do in a child's life when you say the fourth and you are consistent and watch what one day they can be in the lives of others. So I think that, I hope that you use that as a testament to move forward in your own lives. We'll continue on with the scheduled city council meeting. And I thank you all again for coming, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting as well. So we do have some public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first to receive public comments is regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Edward Byrne Moral Justice Assistance Plan. If anyone would like to be heard, please come forward. Seeing that there is not how to close this public hearing. The next to receive public comments is regarding the search economic development initiative for True Woods County Free LLC, which is an Alabama limited liability company. If anyone would like to be heard, please come forward. Seeing that there is not how to close that public hearing. The last to receive public comments is regarding the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two proposed city manager's recommended budget. I do know that our finance director would like to come up and give us a presentation, Ms. Julie Varelli. She's coming.
Good evening, council, members of the House. We're just going to go over a couple of slides to tell you what's on the city manager's recommended budget. The full document is posted on the state website. Again, this is just a brief overview of what's in that document. The first thing we'll go over is the general fund trends. This year, we are projected for two thousand twenty-one, which this fiscal year goes until the end of September, and we're projected to receive forty-three, or forty-three million, so forty-three point seven million.
I think we're good.
Dollars in revenue this year. We're not quite there yet, but we expect we will be by the end of September. This seems a little high, but that also includes those CARES funds that we got in, the over one million dollars. So it includes that, that number seems a little high, but that's the reason why they is the final one is. For two thousand twenty-two, which is right over there, we are projecting, I know you can't really see that, but we are projecting that we're going to have forty-two point two five million dollars in revenue for the two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. Of that amount, our highest revenue comes in in the form of sales tax and of that, we got about twenty-three million dollars of that's going to be sales tax. That's about the same as it was in two thousand twenty-one. Our expenditures is going to be forty-two point two five million and that's because we do a balanced budget. So our expenditures are going to match our revenue, that's just the way that we operate with this budget. Not all of them do the same thing. We are expecting to have forty-four million dollars in expenditures for two thousand twenty-one, which again, you take into consideration all those, the money we receive from the CARES Act is included in that. What's not included in the forty-two point two five million for two thousand twenty-two is the rescue act funds. Those are going into a different fund and different accounts, so they're not represented in that forty-two million dollar amount. Some of the budget considerations we have to take, we have to consider this year are just what do you do? How do you come back to a new normal? You know, you heard this last year when we talked about how COVID had affected the city and how COVID had affected many different cities, you know, we're still working with that. So we are going back to what you might be, what you might consider a normal, but we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like. So we kind of have to figure out where we are going to stay flat with sales, you know, with our sales taxes or with vehicle fees and where we're going to make changes. So that is one thing we have to consider. Our fund balance policy, which is basically like our reserve, we continue to grow that. We're continuing to increase the fund balance. Our merit raises have been frozen for several years now. One of the things that you will see in this budget and in the expenditures is that we are recommending, the city managers recommending we bring back merit raises this year for employees. It's just needed to retain quality employees and be able to bring in new employees. You want to bring them at a fair rate and with the expectation that they will be able to get raises in the future. We'll talk about fire tags, different police incentives. We're looking at some to incentivize some of those positions because we are in trouble to keep our police levels up to what we need them to be. Some other areas that we're looking to, that we're looking to spend money is going to be on playgrounds, different recreational facilities, playgrounds, bike trails. I think a pickleball court is another thing that we're looking at. There are several other capital projects to include equipment and different items that we need for public works. What you won't see in this is the state home, just because we, you know, that's still up in the air and exactly what we're going to do, we've just not made that decision quite yet. So you'll see that updated as we come to something more solid. So this is the areas that we look at. Whenever you talk about general government, if you're looking in the budget, that's going to include city council, anything associated with city councils that they spend, the office of the city manager, human resources, city clerk, the finance department. Public information officer is also on there, let's see there. Public safety is going to be police, municipal court, and fire department, public works. Everything that you can see listed, street drainage, engineering, garbage, sanitation, building maintenance. building maintenance, cemetery, airport, and anything else that, that we can, that we can put under public works. Uh, and then under community development, we've got economic development, planning, code enforcement. They deal with the public quite good. Food, special services, and events, and it works in recreation. It's just things that you'll, you'll deal with them more in the community. This is our sources of revenues and the expectations for this year. Thirty-one point nine, it's like eighty dollars worth of taxes. We have, uh, over five million in license fees and fines, charges for services, a little over two million. And then we have intergovernmental revenues, and then just other revenues. For some of those, we're two point two five million dollars. These are just graphs that recommend, that show the things that we just mentioned, which they're kind of hard to see over there. For our expenditures, this breaks it down by function. Uh, general government, one point five, almost one point six million. That's those things that we mentioned before, the city council, city manager office, finance, those, those, that, then. Uh, public safety, uh, fifteen point one million. And again, that's going to combine your police, fire, vehicles, for, um, public works, six and a half million, four point eight community development, outside agencies, nine point three million. And then transfers out, four point five six seven million, which includes the, the museum or anything we have to transfer out to municipal city schools. That could be any organization that we're requiring transferred out. Again, if you look online at the, at the budget packet, it'll be broken down any more than that. So this is those other funds we were talking about, which is one of, some of the areas that some of those transfers out may have taken place. The museum, uh, includes natural history, the burnout and the long leaf. Uh, internal service funds, so this is where we transfer out funds for our liability insurance, health insurance, and then workers' comp. We have stormwater fund, an Alabama trust fund, gas tax. Uh, gas tax is in a separate fund, uh, and that's taxes we receive from the state by the name of. Uh, fire tax fund, fire training fund. And then I have included, I've put it in its own little block at the bottom, which would be CDG, um, the Rescue Act. And I added the infrastructure bill though that we, we don't, I, I could take that out because we don't have any information on that quite yet. It's just something we're looking at that we hope we get down with. So this is what we received in, uh, for gas tax and what we are proposed, what we are expected to receive, sixty-four thousand for the four point five cent gas tax. Rebuild Alabama is a new one that we're getting from the state. That's one hundred and eighteen thousand, and then seven cent gas tax, that's eighty-one thousand. For Alabama Trust Fund, we're expecting two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue. For the fire tax, we, uh, are expecting nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in revenue this year. Twenty twenty-one, we, we had budgeted for nine hundred and fifty thousand. However, we exceeded that so far this year. So we're, we're increasing that amount to where we're expecting nine hundred and sixty-two thousand for 2022. Fire train fund, about seventy thousand. We're keeping that flat from what we had in twenty twenty-one. Stormwater fund, um, the proposed amount that we believe we will bring in is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and this is money that we spend on projects that are related to stormwater. Again, some of the, this is going to be the final slide, but some of the things we, uh, that the city ma, in the city manager's recommended budget that we requested, and we hit these a little bit earlier, are going to be, um, funds put towards Statute Health Institute. I might actually have that title wrong, I think we went back and forth about what that was actually called before. Uh, Main Street Airport, um, uh, there are some items under fire tax. The police, we do get, um, we are requesting some vehicles this year. Um, directional signs and speed trailers, that would all call under the police department, public works, several items of equipment. There's some street projects and some drainage, uh, areas that we need to address. Putting revenue awards improving our farm market, that's the under forks and recreation, and then playground upgrades again. And then museum, there are several projects on the museum, but most of those are being paid for through capital and sponsorships that they've gotten within the museum. And that is all I have for now. Any questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you, Ms. Morelli. Would anyone else have a figure on this matter? Seeing that there is none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Foltz, do we have any unfinished business?
No, I'm sorry, we're done.
All right, it's time to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved, we will move forward. There are two resolutions coming before us today that have been discussed in previous work sessions. Um, the first resolution is authorizing a special economic development incentive to True Wood Cabin Tree LLC. I'm going to call for a motion to read by title only. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to call for a motion to read by title only.
Submove.
Second. Public hearing on the question of reading by title only. Seeing there is none, the public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please call roll on the issue of reading by title only?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
All right, I'll read by title only. Resolution authorizing a special economic development incentive to True Wood Cabin Tree LLC. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. There being no further discussion, will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
The second resolution is adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022 Proposed City Managers Recommended Budget.
I'm making motion to table. At this time, I've got some amendments that I'm working on.
Councilman Jenkins has motioned to the table adopting fiscal year 2022 Proposed City Managers Recommended Budget. Is there a second?
Seven.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
The resolution is tabled. We also have two ordinances that are now on their second readings. The first is an ordinance amending chapter three governing the license, purchase, and sale of alcoholic beverages. I will call for a motion to read by title only.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Public hearing on the question of reading by title only. Seeing there is none, the public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please call roll on the issue of reading by title only?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
All right. An ordinance amending chapter three governing the license, purchase, and sale of alcoholic beverages. Is there a motion, a motion for passage and adoption?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. There being no further discussion, will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
The second ordinance is adopting chapter thirty-four, article six, governing mobile food units. I will call for a motion to read by title only.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Public hearing on the question of reading by title only. Seeing there is none, public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please call roll on the issue of reading by title only?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting chapter thirty-four, article thirty-six, governing mobile food units. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. There being no further discussion, will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Mr. Foltz, are there any additional matters that come before the council?
No, I'm sorry, there's none.
Thank you. We have now entered our informal comments period. We do have two scheduled public comments from Mr. David Baker and Ms. Joyce Clark. Um, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address. In accordance with our rules, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Baker is coming forward now.
Good evening. My name is David Baker. I live at 116 West Seventeenth Street, Anderson, Alabama. Let me just say why I'm here and what I'm, my comments are. I understand that you have given money to the organization that had no bearing and I would, I would make. West Adamson and all over West Adamson, senior citizens have been calling me. They have tried to get someone to come and refurbish their home, to help refurbish their home, not just all good, but what they need. Understanding that, that General Jackson and West Adamson Foundation was already doing what they were doing before you gave the money to someone else to get it done. And it's not a black and white thing. This is a, it's not just a black thing, it's a black and white thing. Because there are some white people living in our neighborhood this way, and they call. They are not getting the treatments that they should. The people that have it, you have to go online and do it. Ninety percent of the people that need to work down on their home, you know, they can't, they can't do it because they're seventy, eighty, ninety years old. One lady called me, she can't even use her bathroom. Can't even use her bathroom other than her because she had company. If it's a man, he has to go outside. Because don't want nobody standing in her bathroom over the moat, cause of the water flow. We know that. But the people that has the, 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 um, funding, they don't have no intent, or even know anything about it because they don't even live in the neighborhood. They don't have anything to offer. They have to send in a online application, online. And they can't even find the deed they do. I have one of the ladies here with me now. She lives in South Adamson. People from West Adamson, West End, have been calling me and wanting to know why isn't that? General Jackson, West Adamson Foundation, they started it, but you gave money to someone else. West Adamson needs help. We need some of the homes refurbished, and they don't even, it's just, it's just a single thing that you're not, I'm not saying that you're doing anything wrong. I'm just saying that if you had any intent to help the people that need it, you would have carried to West Adamson, West End, South Adamson, knocked on doors, finding out what the people need. The people need your help. And that's why I'm here. It's not about nothing, no, no, nothing that you've done wrong, you just didn't do it right. I just feel that way, and, and the people that call me feel that way also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Will Ms. Joyce Clark please come forward?
Good evening, how y'all doing? My name is Joyce Clark, and I live at 116 West Seventeenth Street.
Speak up.
Oh, I, I'm not safe. I don't feel safe taking my mask off of everybody, I don't have my mask. Okay, I purchased a home three, two years ago in South Adamson. I went to my counseling, the counseling woman, and wore it to counseling. It complained about, not complained, but asked for assistance and help. When I purchased the home, I did not know that the roof was in the condition that it was in. And I asked for help. Well, uh, Councilwoman Sierra, she told me where to go on the website. I couldn't find it. I looked it up, I couldn't find it. It's hanging, so deep into that website that a seventy or eighty-year-old woman cannot find it. I was sixty-seven years old and I couldn't find it. So I'm thinking it's unfair because your papa's favorite, uh, the work. So if they can't find it because my papa sent out assistance, then they don't get the help. Now, last week, this past week, y'all made a world change. They came to Adamson and did fantastic work. I was one of the recipients. My home is built. I'm serious. Come by there and look at it, it is beautiful. I live in town, I can't even try to help myself. I'm not asking for you to do it all, but seven hundred and fifty dollars and for me to do the work, the legwork, to go out and meet the contractors, buy the material, for this, I can't afford that. Seven hundred and fifty dollars, what is it going to do to, I, I mean, a good spot on the roof. It's not going to help me. I have a big roof. And, you know, this is what the lady told me, this, um, Lita something, I can't remember her name. Anyway, she told me what I was asking for, and I got the text and everything that she sent me. And I had other people that she denied assistance to help me. My aunt is seventy-five years old. She's a rejoice, I can't do it, I don't have the internet, and I don't have a way of getting on the internet. So, and they wouldn't take the paper application, they turned it down. I gave them out to different people, they wouldn't accept it. And I think that is also unfair to the people that's in the world that's trying to improve the home, and then we can't give assistance and help. And we want people to come into the city of Anderson. Anderson is like poverty. We look like a third world country in, in certain wards. I would say outer wards. We look like third world country, okay? I go through and look at them every day. But you do have a few homeowners that's trying to do their best. And all they ask for is a little bit of help, and we can't give that from the city of Anderson. And it used to be a time when we could get, when we had leaders that was in our community that would go out there and give us the help we need. But we don't have that anymore. And all I ask for is a little help on the roof. I've done, I'm a joyful worker, it's on my house by myself, but my sons and friends vote, and I don't have that. So, but all I have to say is that.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Let's move on to council comments. I would like to remind council members that in accordance with our procedural ordinance, uh, their comments are limited to three minutes or less as well. Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, thank you Vice Mayor, I have no comments this evening. Thank you all for meeting.
First of all, I'd say good evening. Thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Today, we're witnessing young teen, young, young kids come in, and all across the world, running track, showing off a good sign. There's always a flip side to every corner. And I've been saying, I haven't said this publicly, but I'm just going to say it publicly because I think what, trust me, my mom will get on her, what she was about to say. Here in Anderson, we have a succession plan. We have a succession plan because we have leaders, or former leaders, who are still, who sat up here, who've been in the front line forever, but they haven't passed on their information. Now, one of the hardest things to do is to sit here and, or sit in a seat and look at Facebook, or go to the barber shop, or other places, and just hear yourself get beat down. Now, my thing is I keep asking people, is it just starting? Are any of the problems in Anderson just starting? No. Now, my problem with, with Anderson is, we see our children getting along on every court. Our children are winning championships, every pivotal school. Our children are doing it. Our children have the right. Anderson, White Plains, Donovan, Sacred Law, pick one, pick the elementary schools. The succession plan is failed. Now, when we have leaders who love our city and want to be proactive and help our, our city progress, I can only have one former leader that has come to me and had any conversation about what to expect, what we would need to do. But we started off from scratch and all. Started off from scratch and all, and the problem I have is, we rather come point the finger and pick up the phone call and have a conversation. I'm begging anyone that has a problem with anything going on, going on in Anderson, give us a try. Please give us a try before you crucify us. Thank you.
Um, I would like to just thank everyone for coming out and, you know, being a part of this council meeting and for... and for Mr. Baker and Ms. Joyce, for coming, Ms. Clark, for coming up here and expressing your concerns. Again, what I'm hearing is a lot of misinformation that is being put out there. There are paper copies that can be put out there. Matter of fact, a lot of the, well, I can name three to be exact. Three other women who I have went to their house myself and helped them fill out some of these things online. I'll be quite honest, I haven't received a call from you, Mr. Baker, hearing these concerns. I haven't received a call from you, General Jackson, hearing these concerns. I cannot fix something that I am not aware of. Honest to God. Now, if this would have been a discussion beforehand, you could have had me and several of my mentees and so many other young people who are in these organizations who want to go out and want to help and want to do things to do this. We could have done it. You know, that, that is nothing but a thing for us. This is what we do. That is part of community service. That is not up to the city council. That is up to the people who love this community, and I am one of those members. I am a citizen first before I ever am a council member. All it takes is a phone call. All of you have my number. So I want to say moving forward, if there is an issue, always feel free to come and, and say that to the public, whatever you need to be, you know, need to be said, but please know that my phone rings. You know, I, I want to hear from you. I want to have these conversations. You know that I'm down to do it, and you know that you have a bunch of young people who are willing to help when it comes to technology and things like that, because I do agree and share those same sentiments that after a certain age, yes, you are not willing to form when it comes to technology. So I understand that. I hear that, but please, let's, let's make sure that we're rolling through the process and doing everything that we can before we just come to a conclusion that no one's helping, because that's not the case. Lastly, I think that's, that's pretty much it as far as what I wanted to say. Again, thank you all for coming. Councilmember Harris?
I'm just kidding. I am so proud of the job that Vice Mayor Sierra Smith has done tonight. Trust me, I was in her shoes before. It's not easy. She handled it beautifully. And I want to thank Mr. Baker and Ms. Clark for coming. The, the community passion is critical. And I think that you might hear your point, that you willing to help, and so I appreciate it so very much. And anyway, everyone have a great week. Thank you.
With no further comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Subway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare?
Yes.
You are now dismissed.